I call this meeting of Mobley City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Rue Baker?
Here.
Lucas?
Here.
Jeffrey?
Here.
Kaiser?
Here.
Kimmons?
Okay, everyone should have received a copy of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? There are none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second. That motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is approved. Next, you should have received copies of the minutes for the last two meetings, May fifteenth and May thirty first. Is there any additions, corrections on that? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Approval minutes pass. Recognition of visitors. Mr. Crane?
None of this.
You have any? Okay. Under Communication Request, informational items, number two. Chief Link.
Good evening, Council. Senior Manager Crane. Tonight I'd like to present a life-saving commendation to Officer Jaclyn Scott. Have a letter that briefly details the circumstances of what's brought this commendation around. If you're okay with it, I'll just read it verbatim. On May eighth, twenty twenty-three, at twenty-three thirty-three hours, G. Hicks rushed into the police department carrying her unresponsive six-week-old premature granddaughter, Kay Martin. Officer Scott ran to lobby, assessed the infant, and found the infant was turning blue and not breathing. Without hesitation, placed Kay Martin in the recovery position, began infant CPR by administering back blows. As Officer Scott was performing the back blows, mucus was seen coming out of Martin's nose and the infant began to cry. K. Hicks utilized a suction bulb to remove the remaining mucus from the infant's nose and mouth as Officer Scott continued to perform back blows to the infant. As the mucus was removed, Martin began to breathe on her own with normal coloring beginning to return along with increased crying. Mobley Fire Department supplied oxygen to the infant, Randolph County Ambulistics arrived, and care of Martin was turned over to them. Infant Martin was later transported to University of Missouri Hospital for further treatment and was released the following day. For her quick decisive action to begin CPR, Officer Scott will receive the life-saving commendation. Her actions are directly responsible for the saving of the life of Kay Martin. Officer Scott exemplified and embodied the professional policing and dedication to duty the Mobley Police Department strives to provide to citizens of Mobley and Randolph County. I'm immensely proud to present Officer Jaclyn Scott with this commendation. So what this is, is the commendation itself, as well as a letter of claim for her. So we're presenting this here as a commemorative proud of the actions she did, of the services she put, and simplifies our duty to do here, and hopefully be open that. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, before we go on, I want to mention if anyone wants to address the council tonight, we have some green cards out in the foyer for you to fill out and complete and then hand those to the clerk. And if one is your time to come up, you have four minutes to address the council. Number three, requests from YMCA. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We received a request for the glow run for this year during Railroad Days. The YMCA is going to be hosting that event. It'll be on June sixteenth. It has gone through public safety and the parks, and they are recommending approval.
Okay. I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second. We have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That request is approved. Number four, twenty twenty-three annual report for the Room at the End.
Yes, Mayor. We received the twenty twenty-three annual report from Room at the End. And this is just for informational purposes only. Ted, do you want to present any information?
Ted Sander with Room at the End Project. I don't have anything necessarily to add. I'm available to answer questions if you've got any questions.
I noticed you had a slight increase.
Yes.
Which is nice where those people that needed it.
Yes. This is more along the lines of what we had expected. The first year was, the numbers were down considerably below what we had expected. I think that was because we were new, because people didn't know us and weren't quite trusting us yet. And then we got hit with that really bad cold spell right before Christmas. And people just, all of a sudden, we had more people than we had ever had last year. And that stayed throughout the Christmas season. And as I said in the report, the highest count we had of any night was Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. So.
And I was impressed with the way y'all handled the Amtrak.
Thank you.
On that accident.
That's something else that we had hoped that we could provide for the community on an as-needed basis. And it worked out very well. The community responded. I mean, there was food, there was whatever we needed. There was all kinds of stuff was donated. And so it was, it was more than just the Room at the End group. It was, it was the whole community.
Ted, thank you for doing what you do. That's a great service. Is it more local people that you're seeing, or is it more transient people passing through that you're seeing?
You know, we had five people during this season that spent one night only. And we had another ten that stayed multiple nights. Now, we know for sure that there were, of those five people, we know for sure that there were two or three that were transient. The remainder, the people that were there repeatedly, we think are probably more or less permanent residents. We know there were a couple, three transients, but the rest of them, we really don't know.
Sure. Thank you.
One other thing I remember you, I can't remember the exact amount, maybe a hundred twenty-some odd volunteers?
Right.
Is that right?
Right. We've got.
That's very impressive.
Well, we've got a hundred and twenty, I don't, I'd have to look through my reports to see exactly, but we've got a hundred and twenty-some volunteers. And because of the limited number of nights that we were open, we were only open twenty-two nights this, this winter. And we only had forty-five of those hundred and twenty-three people that actually spent a shift. Several of them spent multiple shifts, but we only had forty-five actual volunteers that, that worked. But I would also say that a number of the volunteers, we have, we have, you know, we're dealing with people in the community. People in the community have different hours that they can work. If you're working during the week, it's hard to stay up all night and, and serve a shift. But we get a lot of people like, we've had, we had several teachers that are willing to come in and work weekends, you know? They work when they're available and, you know, we really appreciate that. Again, it's, it's a community thing and everybody in the community contributes and it, it works.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I have, one, thank you. And I was really thrilled to be a part of the start of this and getting it through the council. Two things I noticed was, or the one thing I noticed was you mentioned in there is that you had no reliance on the local law enforcement like we feared.
Right.
That we're going to have an issue with that.
Right.
Has not come to fruition, which is great. My question is, is there anything that the city can do that you have found that are the rules you have today that are a hindrance to what you're doing? Or are you able to work on the framework that, as well as you had hoped?
With, with what we're doing right now, the, the rules that we're working under with, from the city are, are sufficient. They're not, they're not overly restrictive. And they allow us to do what we need. If there's something comes up in the future, we'll, we'll let you know.
Obviously.
Well, thanks again. We, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next is, we have a consent agenda tonight. Are, are there any resolutions under the consent agenda that you would like to leave out of the agenda? No? Okay. I have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Put a motion in second. First reading, please. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor. I got ahead of myself. All those in favor, please. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, first reading. Thank you.
Resolution number R one four six four. A resolution of the City of Mobley, Missouri authorizing application for a fiscal year twenty twenty-three state homeland security program grant for tactical heavy vests. Resolution R one four six five. A resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the agreement with Willis Brothers, Inc. for Sturgeon and Rollins Water Main replacement. Resolution R one four six six. A resolution authorizing and accepting a change order to the agreement with L and J Development, Inc. for installation of a bill payment, payment kiosk at City Hall. Resolution R one four six seven. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an on-call engineering services agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for minor tasks not related to contracts and grant administration. And lastly, resolution number R one four six eight. A resolution authorizing and accepting change order number two to the Tannahill Waterline Construction Contract with Willis Brothers, Inc.
Is there any questions, discussion on any of those resolutions? There are none, do I have a motion for approval? So move.
Second.
You have motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda resolutions pass. Next, under ordinance, that is a resolution number ten.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development. Ask to be read twice for consideration by title only.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in second for the reading of the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Stewart Custom Homes LLC for five twelve, five twelve Robert Street.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say, or I'm sorry, is there a motion, please? Oh, second reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing a cooperative agreement for infill development with Stewart Custom Homes LLC for five, five twelve Robert Street.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, no. Got to have a roll call.
Oh, roll call. That's right.
Rue Baker?
Thank you. Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance, amending ordinance number ninety-seven oh eight. I ask for it to be read twice for consideration.
We have a motion. Is there a second for the reading?
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number nine seven oh eight by increasing water and sewer rates.
Any discussion on this? Second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number nine seven oh eight by increasing water and sewer rates.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
So move.
This is a roll call.
Yeah. You got to have a motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a second. Roll call, please.
Rue Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Number twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance of the City of Mobley, Missouri authorizing the city manager to acquire certain property by purchase or condemnation. I ask that be read twice for consideration of passage.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading.
An ordinance of the City of Mobley, Missouri authorizing the city manager to acquire certain property by purchase or condemnation.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion? Oh, second reading, excuse me.
An ordinance of the City of Mobley, Missouri authorizing the city manager to acquire certain property by purchase or condemnation.
Any discussion? If not, do I hear a motion for approval? So move.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call, please.
Rue Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Moving on, number thirteen, resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between May twelfth, twenty twenty-three and June first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred eight dollars and fifty cents. Ask to be read once for consideration of passage.
Thank you.
You need a second and a reading.
Pardon me?
You need a second and then the reading.
Okay.
I'll think of the motion.
Do we have a motion in second? First and only reading?
Got to vote.
Oh. Golly. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three and June first, two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one million, two hundred seventy-three thousand, four hundred eight dollars and fifty cents.
I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the City of Mobley, Missouri unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. Signed, City Treasurer, City of Mobley, Missouri Gregory L. Hodge. Thank you. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
That motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes. Okay, this week we have no official reports. But under anything else to come before the council, we do have number fourteen. Consideration for approval of renewal liquor license applications.
Mayor and council, we've received renewal liquor applications from B and B Theaters, Bratcher's Fuel and Bratcher's Market, Break Time Stores number thirty-seven-one and thirty-one sixty-three, Coates Street Corners Grill, Diablo Lingo, Dollar General Stores. Diablo Lingo, Dollar General Stores number eighteen-eleven, number twelve-thirty, and number two-four-six-seven-one, El Vicaro, Felicia's Restaurant and Entertainment, Fast Lane F L fifty-nine, Fraternal Order of Eagles number two-six-six-nine, Get It and Go Express and Get It and Go Express South, Mallard's Pub and Pool, Mobley Mart, Mo Axe Company, Pizza Works, VFW Post two-six-five-four, Walgreens number one-zero-three-seven-seven, Walmart Supercenter number forty, and Express Liquor and Smoke. These have all gone through the appropriate departments and we do recommend approval.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I approve or move that we approve the liquor licenses.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Passes. Next, uh, that's that's all I have as far as the agenda tonight for the city council. Is there anyone that wanted to approach the city council? Seeing no hands fly up, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to work session followed by closed session.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for coming to the city council meeting. Uh, that concludes our city council. Now we're gonna go into work session. We're adjourned from the city council. Now we're going into the work session. And we have several items here, sixteen items, so let's get going on number one. Showing a request from the Prevail Gym to hold a five K run and street closure on September tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we'll give everybody a second to leave if they want to.
Okay.
I'll I'll handle this one. Can't get my screen to get bigger. Here we go. Mayor, this is a request from Prevail Gym to do a five K. This is, I think this might be during the Junk Junction event. Uh, it has gone through Public Safety and Parks Department, and we are recommending approval.
Okay.
I think this is the first this year, this will be the first time.
This one is, okay.
The route's on the board if you.
Any questions or concerns?
You said this is during Junk Junction?
Yeah, I think it's the morning. It's a a morning event. Sunday, Sunday morning, yeah.
Did you see the piece in there about the the request for specific road closure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I was making sure we were okay with closing the entire road. Is that what we normally do on five Ks?
I think it was Sturgeon, wasn't it?
Okay.
There's not much activity through there. You'll just have to get a different street going to church that morning.
So to clarify, we're not closing Rollins or Cook Street, correct?
Okay. We got okay moving that forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Number two. Discussion regarding the purchase of sewer cleaning and inspection for public utilities. Dana.
Yes, Council.
Welcome.
This is a periodic cleaning of a line that Mobley does not possess the equipment to clean. Um, and after sanitary sewer overflows experienced in that line last month and the month before, um, it was time to get this cleaned on an emergency basis. So we brought in a vendor that has uniquely ideal equipment to clean that line, and they're in the process of finishing up that project as we meet tonight.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Jeffrey.
So I noticed the cleaning truck and they elected to clean from the walk-in trail path instead of the street, and the trail's pretty much obliterated. Whose liability is that gonna be?
Utility department's gonna take care of that. We've already spoken to a contractor to get that taken care of, and as soon as arrangements can be made and put in the contractor's schedule, that'll get replaced.
Thank you.
We're gonna replace it also with a path that's suitable for future projects. They're realizing this won't be the last time we use that site for cleaning.
Okay, any other questions?
I just got one. I know it says that in the uh, in our wording here that we are going to contract with them to do this routinely. How often does this need to be done?
Well, we're gonna contract with them to do the televising of the line routinely, but it remains to be seen how often it'll need to be cleaned as part of the loading on that line. Part of the sewer flows through that line are going to be redirected after the Morley Lift Station project has been completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone have any problems moving that one forward?
No.
Okay. Next is uh number three. Discussion regarding accepting a permanent water and sewer line easement for the East Outer Road Water and Sewer Project.
There is a development planned just south of Lowe's there on the Outer Road, and this is an easement that's been waiting for quite a while from the property owner, and we were finally able to make headway and obtain that easement in order to allow gravity sewer line flow to the east from that future development site.
That's good. Any questions? Assume you guys are okay moving that one forward, too?
Yes.
Okay, move that forward. Uh, next is a discussion regarding approving the purchase and installation of utility billing office flooring and authorizing the city manager to approve the proposal on behalf of the city.
City staff attempted to obtain up to three quotes for that. They were unsuccessful. They had one the one vendor who chose not to respond, another vendor who said, um, I can't remember the exact quote, but we don't do government buildings. But we were successfully getting in one good vendor, which was the exact same one that did the city clerk's office next door to the billing office.
Okay.
That floor gets quite a bit of wear every single day with with us walking there. Other departments coming through to use the copying equipment, and it was time for a replacement.
Any questions? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this one forward. Number five, uh, consideration for two appointments to the airport advisory board.
So we have two members that are existing that have signed letters of willing to return, and then we also have three new applicants on their lawful review.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move forward the appointment of the two current sitting board members for approvals of the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Everyone okay with that? I agree. So we'll keep the same two that's already on. Uh, number six. This one is consideration for three appointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'm requesting that we move this to the next work session. This one?
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
We'll move this to the next work session. Number seven, review of a draft task order number nineteen from B and W Bar for Wa- Wabash Heights ARPA Grant Project.
So this is a joint application for the engineering for the ARPA Stormwater Grant we received for the Wabash Heights area. This and at this engineering proposal right here is very the very preliminary where it helped us determine the path forward on there. There's so many things to look at as far as how do we deal with the sewer, who's able to connect to the sanitary sewer. We have to get that figured out before we can look at draining the area. So this is the preliminary part of that. So there's other scopes and services from engineering that would come later. I've kind of outlined those later on, but uh, this part of it is one hundred and thirty-nine thousand.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Jeff.
So does the Norfolk Southern Rail Yard drain that way or do they drain a different direction?
Um, I think they primarily drain to the south, but they there it could come off in multiple directions there. I mean, probably most of it probably goes down across Buchanan. It goes, there's a drainage way it comes down.
I guess my my reason I ask the question is if there was a reason to be um vigilant about what would come down through that sewer, given what's happened in the yard as far as hazardous waste.
I don't think there's a concern right there with the area we're looking at is basically go from Sparks up to North Avenue in that area, and then from the railroad tracks to uh Robertson Road, more or less. And so that area is all so flat, it doesn't have any drainage anywhere. So that there's a little bit of range down to Sparks, but nothing's coming into that area from the south.
Okay, thank you.
Y'all, okay, moving that one forward. Okay, we'll move that forward to next council meeting. Next is uh, number eight, application for a conditional use permit submitted by Devon Snodgrass on behalf of Mike and Melissa Anderson for a proposed pet care facility located eleven-twenty South Morley Street.
So Mike and Melissa are here. If you had any specific questions, but planning and zoning reviewed this. You see the large green area is the tract and hole, and then the light blue is the fenced-in area, the run area, which would be behind there. The dark blue is the existing building, and they would pave the parking there, and they have the proper number of parking spaces from the size of the facility, and you see the limitations. I think there were like uh twenty animals. I mean, P and Z reviewed that. It all fit within our criteria. Uh, the only questions really were there was concerns about late how late animals would be out, but they would be indoors at night, and they would also, there was five days a week listed on there. If they had animals boarded, there would be people coming on every any day that they had animals boarded, so there wouldn't be like unattended.
Okay, questions? Anyone? No? Okay, we'll move that forward. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Number nine, discussion regarding accepting the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for Mobley Regional Detention Basin Construction Project for Public Utilities. Dana, you're back?
I am. Mayor and Council, this is for one of the six E D A projects, which was the Regional Detention Basin, which is located almost due west of MFA. It serves both the MFA and the Swift sites. Uh, this is an increase in size and the ability for it to hold storm flows, and we want to award this bid to, if I can remember the name, Boone Construction, and they're ready to begin. So they're waiting on on this body to do award the bid, and they'll be ready to go.
Okay, any questions? Are you okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this to the next city council meeting. Thank you, Dana. Number ten, review of Mobley Correctional Center supervised work release agreement.
This is a renewal of our annual contracts for the uh uh Correctional Center uh offenders, and so the prices are the same, seven fifty, forty-eight hour shift as they were last year. Staff recommends approval.
Questions? Everyone okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this to the next city council meeting. Number eleven, discussion of existing mobile home park.
This is a request we've had, you know, this mobile home park there, Sour Bombs at South Morley is due to close in August. We've got a copy of the letter where they're gonna be shutting it down, so all the people that are in there have to have their trailers out by the end of August. There are probably three or four trailers in there that are uh able to pass code, and so they've been requesting if they could pass code, could they retain those or relocate those into another existing mobile home park inside the city limits of Mobley? Uh, if they do beat the code and council would agree that if they're all over ten years old, so that was a limiting factor where staff can't allow at this point. They'd have to take action on council's part.
Okay, questions? Only question I had uh on the mobile home park itself, does it have a lagoon there? Or is that on city?
I think they're on city sewer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure there's sewer in that area.
Okay.
So if I understand this right, so you're talking about trailers that are already over ten years old. So we're basically gonna take an old trailer and move them from where we have them now to another place where they're gonna be an old trailer, which I don't know which one it was, but we ended up tearing down, doing demo on uh one before, so I'm not sure I'm in favor of this.
Any other questions? Are you okay moving this forward?
I I was okay with the fact that as long as it passes the inspection. I mean, if it doesn't pass inspection, then I'd say absolutely not, but if it's already here today, it's not like they're bringing it in from out of town. That was we went through this with P and C. The concern was people were bringing them from out of town in and putting them in our parks. My understanding of this conversation, this is.
That was the only reason we ever were considering, because they're existing in a park that's shutting down. The people are being
kicked out. They don't have a choice. They gotta.
Yeah, they gotta move out, and so they wouldn't be able at this point to relocate them in town, so we would normally not even consider this.
Yeah, I mean, because it's uh, it's not their fault the park's closing, so um, I'm in favor of moving it forward, but as long as it's passing inspection.
Tom, how many uh mobile homes would you estimate that we're talking about here?
Well, I mean, they're pretty much a picture. I'd say there's about ten probably that are existing there.
And most of them are probably older than ten years.
I think three or four is all they're even considering trying to get there.
Oh, okay.
Looking at them, uh, they already scheduled inspections for them, and so they had outside, he was gonna provide outside pictures and stuff of the trailers, and they're, I mean, they're not the ones they're proposing are the best of the group there. I mean, they would not look out of place in the other facility.
Okay. Okay, moving this one forward. Okay, we'll move this to the next city council meeting. Number twelve, a resolution approving a governmental consulting services agreement between the City of Mobley, Missouri and Zamkus and Associates LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Yes, Mayor, this is an annual agreement with Zamkus and Associates for Government Relations Services. Uh, we've done this one for probably four or five years now, and we're asking that this be moved forward.
You you feel like we're still getting our our money's worth?
Yeah, it's it's very low cost uh service for us. Uh, had quite a bit of work on the use tax issue from a few years ago. Uh, we continue to battle uh sales tax exemption issues, right away issues. Jason worked quite a bit last year on legislative fixes for potential nine-one-one services, so there's still a lot of work to be done and a lot of uh focus on local governments at the statewide level.
Okay. Mr. Jeffrey.
Plus, I I think I would add the um, what did you call that? The there was that new air regulation that D N R was trying to put on at some point, that he got the people involved with that, too, which what was the definition of it? I'm sorry.
Drawing a blank on the term.
Yeah, it's a
Yeah.
Not toxic air, but it's something air regulation that D N R was gonna impose. It wasn't even an EPA reg, and so he uh coordinated the opposition against that, and
Okay, yeah.
That's been probably a year ago.
Couple of years, yeah. This year was a lot of defense, a lot of bills that we weren't interested in having passed. Uh, not a lot of bills that we were trying to get approved. Um, and there, you know, I think Jason's gonna try to come at next meeting, give you a legislative update, which he usually does every summer.
Be good, yeah.
So that will happen, and he can fill you in on some of the details, but uh, there weren't a lot of bills uh truly agreed to, so uh, once again, a lot of bills being submitted, but not a lot of bills getting through the process. He also does a lot of administrative service work for us as well, so it's not just working at the Capitol Building. It's like uh Councilman Jeffrey said, a lot of administrative work, D N R, Department of Corrections.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, for the fifteen thousand dollar cost, uh, it's it's relatively low entry level cost for us.
Mr. Kaiser, the other point I was, every year this comes up, and it's always, you know, yes, we have representative representation through Murma, but sometimes our inches are different than Murma, and it's nice to have some advocating Mobley's interest because we've been lacking that in years past, so I'm all for it.
Mr. Lucas, do you have anything? Nope. Everyone okay moving this one forward? Okay, we'll move this one to the next council meeting. Uh, next, I have a resolution approving grant funding to area civic and Uh, next, I have a resolution approving grant funding to area civic and charitable organizations and authorizing the city manager to execute annual service agreements with area civic and charitable organizations.
Yes, Mayor, we annually, uh, provide resources to a few not-for-profits that are listed on the board. These are done annually about this time every year. We did pull out the chamber with that new agreement, so they're not in this agreement anymore. They're, they've got a standalone agreement. But these four entities, the Senior Center, uh, Nomo Community Foundation, the Arts Council, and, um, Moberly Community Betterment are the ones that we currently fund and have for quite a few years.
Okay. Mr. Kaiser?
I seem to ask, I feel like I ask this every year, but Nomo Foundation, we always, we give a thousand dollars every year, it seems like. But I never see, what does that go to do? I mean, who, are they doing anything in the community? Are they active? Uh, I have not seen anything in four years.
I was going to ask the same question. I, I don't know.
They...
I, I'll take, uh, that in defense of Mr. Hodge. Better get that picture.
And I'm not, I don't mean to be offensive. I'm just asking the question.
Uh, I believe you're using Nomo for the tax exempt donations for the pillars in urban debt. Yes, that's correct. Read my pack.
That's a good question.
They've, they've done Tactical Vest, uh, quite a few years ago. That's probably been four or five years, five years ago. Spay neuter program donations. So there's a few programs we try to use.
Sidewalk projects.
Students on sidewalks was another one they, uh, used that organization for.
Really?
Okay, any other questions? No? If not, are you okay moving this one forward?
Yes.
And I was not trying to offend anybody by my question.
Mayor, I might also mention, I, I think Nomo did change their name. I don't know if it's official yet. Moberly Community Foundation now?
Yes, Moberly Community Foundation, and that's, that is in effect.
Okay.
Okay.
So they're now focused on Moberly.
It will change that, I assume.
Yeah.
Okay, fourteen, ordinance of the City of Moberly, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interests for certain municipal officials.
The city readopts this ordinance every two years. It is mandated, mandated by the state of Missouri. And it just establishes a procedure for publicly declaring any potential conflicts of interest. Um, and then after the approval of the ordinance, if you do that, I will send a certified copy of that ordinance to the Missouri Ethics Commission.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, moving this one forward. Okay, we'll move this one forward to the next, uh, city council meeting. Number fifteen, a change order number three from L&amp;J Development for the Amphitheater in Rothwell Park.
So as we continue through this, uh, process, there's a few items that come up. Uh, for example, the, it's very soft clay out there, and there's some stormwater issues. They had to take, uh, they had to do additional excavation, go deeper and bring in some additional rocks as part of it. There's some additional stormwater-related items, such as replacing the, uh, some of the bad gutters on the Riley Pavilion, as long as they're in there. Uh, and then the, the biggest chunk of it is, um, as long as our revenues are, are doing well, it makes more sense to, um, go ahead with, with item that was going to be a phase two and put in concrete at the east end of the solar pavilion between that and what will be the paved parking lot. So we have solid surface, um, sloping to the east, southeast to drain sheet flow all that water to the, uh, the rusty area between there and the road. So, uh, most of these items are incidental, but again, that, that biggest chunk is one at our request to go ahead and do now. It just makes more sense.
Okay, any questions? I had a question. Just the overall project, do you have a target date?
Originally, it was shooting to be done by the end of, uh, June. Of course, we had a couple of weeks, um, uh, of rain, which slowed things down. That area is deceiving that it is soft clay. So, for example, about the third week of April, after we'd had about three weeks of dryness, our staff on a separate project on adjacent ground took our skid steer and eventually tractor down there, and it sunk four to six inches. So there's little bits of water have been a big challenge. Um, and so, um, the original target was the end of June, um, but it's, it's likely to be, uh, the end of July is my expectation.
July, what, what year?
This, this year.
Thank you, Trevor.
L&amp;J has been doing good about using every hour that, and, and day they can when it's been dry enough to get on it with equipment.
Are you all okay moving that one forward?
Yeah. This year.
This year? Okay, we're going to move this forward to this year, to the next city council meeting. Next I have is number sixteen, appointment to the Tourism Advisory Commission.
I have a request to change out the Chamber of Commerce Representative, Candace Rodman. Resigned and, uh, Chamber of Commerce submitted serigraft is their appointment to the board. And for Representative, and then Gina Fowler has also submitted her resignation. I think we have, uh, do we have a new application filed?
Yeah.
One, okay, yeah, Mark Fisher.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Mark Fisher. He's with, uh, our Dean Mongler?
Yeah, in Arts Department, or, or not, Arts Council, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions? You okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. Sanders, I, I don't know if this is a question for you or Megan, but I think certainly, um, the chamber person that you're changing is certainly well-qualified. But do you really feel like someone who works out of town is going to be able to make those meetings? I understand that. I said, do you think she's going to be able to make the meeting?
She's been to the first one.
I guess she's accepted, right? So she understands that.
Yeah, what time are they meeting now, Tom?
Nine on what day is we're going?
Second Tuesday.
Nine o'clock in the morning?
Nine.
We, we were struggling with attendance, so we pulled the numbers to try to figure out when could everybody most likely be there, and that was the date and time they came up, but...
I'm sure what we're downtown business people, so that kind of worked for them.
Yeah.
That's good. So that's all, uh, I'm sorry. That's all I have for the work session. Pardon me?
Are we going to move that one forward?
Oh, yes. Are you all okay moving that forward? Okay, we will move that forward to the next city council meeting. Pardon me?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Lucas is okay with that. So, um, next I'd entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Submove.
Say it. So that's the end of the work session. Do we have to vote on that?
Do you? Do you though?
Uh, do we have to vote on that?
Oh, okay.
Just all in favor?
Staying corrected.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?